Yeah.
It's only agenda for discussion to ask the. Based on the discussion of the last meeting. Always possible. Although they, they, that's a good question too, if they're going to be staying, there is some problems with cracks. I'm not sure what they want to do with that. That'd be a good question to ask. The last two.
We did get involved with that.
Make it safe in terms of.
Brief discussion in a previous. Like session. Yeah, I don't think it's taking more than five, 10 minutes. I just wanted.
We have priced it out, eight courts, 150,000. Fence.
Multitask.
Yeah. Yeah. You just love this place, Doug.
I still, you still have my money though, so I gotta come back.
It's on the.
Eighty-five thousand dollars.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Our first, our next item up on the agenda is our police department promotion. I'm going to ask the board to come up and stand up front of our podium here and turn things over to Chief Burbaker.
Good evening. We're here on my job.
She wore us out because she was up every hour and. But yeah, she did one very well. We can be thankful for that.
Misery, my mother laws in her for six year dimension in North St. Gom. She hasn't known who she is now for about three years.
That's what my mom didn't want. She was thankfully with it. I mean, she was able to say, talk to the grandkids and. So. Better to be unaware or aware. She was ready for it. So she was aware. She was aware and. She seemed okay with it.
I'll pray for you guys.
Thank you. Likewise.
Well, we kind of come to terms at my mother-in-law at this point, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a rough thing with dementia.
It is, but it's also a very, very peaceful, famous way to go once.
Yeah. So. You're living your own little world. And doesn't necessarily have to be a bad.
He has lived a good life. I know where she's going to end up. Actually.
Yeah.
She's a believer in Jesus. She's ended up in a good place.
Yeah.
Quiet at seven o'clock.
Yeah. Great.
It's related to me. Ms. Switzer. No, I'm not.
Tends by Zoom though.
You get to have another friendly audience for the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, it's always lightens the mood.
There's a lot of former officers here too.
Good evening. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply. And the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on to staff to, from staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized, we will ask you to unmute your microphone. And after you're finished speaking, we're going to ask you to please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest login for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure previously discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. All comments should be directed towards the board. We will now move on to our first item on the agenda. Would you please join me in rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first, our next item up on the agenda is our police department promotion. I'm going to ask the board to come up and stand up front of our podium here and turn things over to Chief Burbaker.
Good evening. We're here tonight to stand in front of you to recognize two officers with East Hemphill who are being promoted to the position of sergeant. First is Christopher Keen. You could come forward.
Bring the children.
All right. Chris was hired by East Hemphill in January of 2012. He has a bachelor's degree from Lockhaven in criminal justice and a master's from Penn State in homeland security. Chris has served as an FTO and OIC. He's been the recipient of our Officer of Year Award, a two-time recipient of our Community Policing Award, numerous unit citations, lifesaving awards, and an award for heroism. Tonight, we're here to celebrate Chris's promotion to patrol sergeant. Your dad is going to be doing your. Wife's going to do. Brittany? Father's going to be doing the pinning of his chub on his collar grass. Our second promotion to recognize tonight is Richard Galk. Rich was hired by the department in November of 2015. He came to us with experience from Redding City. He has a degree from Delaware County Community College in Administration of Justice. He's a bike officer. He has numerous awards, unit citations, and accommodation of merit in 2018. Rich has been in an investigative position for the past three and a half years and is now being promoted to the position of sergeant within the agency. Congratulations. You still have your mom? Okay. As you know, over the past few months, we've had a couple retirements that we've recognized here within the agency, which has led to a domino effect of some promotions. Tonight, I'm very excited. We have our first new hire to replace some of the vacancies due to retirements. Steve Cruz, if you could come forward. You might recognize Steve. He worked for East Hemphill Township for about four years in another capacity. Steve grew up in the Hemphill area, graduated from Columbia High School. In 2017, he joined East Hemphill Township as a member of the Public Works Department. Steve always had a desire to be a police officer. He spoke with Chief Skiles numerous times and other officers within the agency about what he could do to be a police officer. That was his goal. That's been his ambition for years and years is to be a police officer. He listened to some advice that was given to him. He had excellent support from his family. He, in 2021, decided to put himself through the municipal police academy part-time while holding a position for Public Works here at East Hemphill. In the summer, he was offered, given an opportunity with Lancaster City to be hired by their department to go to the academy and finish the academy on a part-time basis, but to also work in a community civilian position for the city until he graduated from the academy in December of 2021. We all knew Steve really wanted to be an East Hemphill police officer. He's very lucky to have the opportunity that the city was able to provide to him for about the past eight months. And when our openings came available here, Steve eagerly went through our application process. And very excited tonight. Steve's hard work, dedication, a goal that he set out for himself to be a member of, of this police department has come to fruition tonight with the, the support and his drive. So very excited. Your wife, Renee, is she going to do your pinning? Chief Skiles? Okay, Chief Skiles, if you could come forward, please. Okay, very good.
You may want to have him do the oath first. Oath of office.
I do solemn swear that I please support, obey, defend the Constitution and the law of the common law. And that I will discharge the duties of police officer with fidelity. Obey and enforce law without consideration to individuals of race, color, sex, sexual age, national origin, ancestry.
Congratulations. We're just going to take a minute to let the room clear for those that want to leave.
We're just going to take a minute to let the room clear for those that want to leave. Okay, up next on our agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine items which require very little discussion or debate. With that, is there any discussion on the board for the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Bennett, second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes for with one abstention. Mr. Russell, thank you. Up next, we have Shriver Center for Pediatrics, 625 Community Way.
Good evening, everyone. Todd Smig with CC Goon Associates on behalf of Shriver Center for Pediatric Development. Tonight on your agenda is, we're seeking final conditional approval for the building expansion at 625 Community Way. This work was started before the pandemic and has now come to conclusion from the planning aspect of it. She's working on it.
Not cooperating with me.
It's all good. I'll just be very brief. I see you have a very full agenda. The expansion is 5,167 square feet on the end of the building closest to Good Drive. I would imagine that all the supervisors are very aware where Shriver Center is. We're proposing some additional spaces, vehicle spaces. The building expansion will accommodate a reallocation of existing space in the building for treatment and services provided to the community. The building expansion proper will be largely for offices. It'll allow Shriver to consolidate folks that are nearby but off-site. So everybody's going to be under one roof. That's, that's really the prime, the prime purpose behind it. Site sits in Community Business Center Zone. The zoning hearing board worked with us to allow for the expansion of the building the way the zoning ordinance is written. Stormwater management, the site has been developed for quite some time. Again, Shriver's been in place for well over 20 years at this location. There were some modifications made to the existing stormwater basin and the existing rain garden to accommodate the additional impervious. We've addressed all the technical concerns. Your engineer is going on record in a series of letters dated April 18th in regard to financial security, operation maintenance, and of course, technical review. Will, would respectfully request the supervisors' consideration of, here we go. Consideration of the waivers that company this plan along with the approval of the plan itself. We've been signed out because we're on another device. This, if if the little Zoom panel goes, goes away, the the rendering, the rendering, what you can see around it is the proposed expansion. It is going to be three stories. And it'll be very close to the parking lot. So again, people, there you go. Perfect. Thank you. So we would actually be standing between the building and Good Drive, looking at, at that end of the, of the building to give you an idea of how that lays out. I guess I should ask supervisors, do you have any questions specific to the project? Do you want me to go through the waivers? I can summarize them very, very quickly if you, if you like.
I mean, I'm good with the project. Does there anybody from the board that has questions or concerns at this point?
This has been before the planning commission?
Yes.
And were there any comments from the planning commission?
None, other than the recommendations of the engineer.
Okay, and thank you.
Mr. LaFever?
No, I'm fine. Take care.
Anyone from the audience? Mr. Hane?
No, no, it's a pretty clean letter at this point.
Okay. Well then, before us gentlemen, I think we need to start if, if the board's in agreement that we're going to move forward with this. We need a motion to approve waiver request 1, 3, 4, 6, and waiver 2 and 5 with conditions. Is there a motion by Mr. Russell? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Final land development plan. Is there a motion to approve the final land development plan for Shriver Center for Pediatrics? Township file 21-100.15, subject to all staff and engineering comments. Motion by Mr. Weaver, second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, up next will be St. Leo of the Great.
Good evening. My name is Molly Hughes with Red Barn Consulting, here representing St. Leo the Great School. Tonight, we're requesting an extension of their land development approval from 2015. They originally had land development approval in 2015 and constructed their first phase of construction and completed it in 2015. And always had plans to do a second phase, but with a lot of financial constraints, their project was delayed several times. They were ready to go again in the spring of 2020, but with the COVID shutdowns and all that uncertainty, the project was delayed even further. Since that time, they've reduced the size of the footprint to be more financially feasible. And we have updated a construction site plan to submit to the engineer for review. And that plan will be notarized and recorded with the, with the plans for, as a new updated footprint. And the project has a renewed NPDS permit approval, which is good until December of 2024. So at this time, they'd like to seek approval to begin construction this summer when the school is shut down. And there's less interference with school and traffic so that they can get the majority of the outside work completed and finishing inside work this fall. Do you have any questions about this request?
Any comments or questions from the board?
No. No.
Mr. Hane?
We, we met with the applicant. They're, they're technically past the five-year window of approval that you provided them in 2015. So we suggested, because the plan changed twice in the interim too, to become smaller, that they come back to you, get approval to extend that, that, that timeframe and then to move forward like, like they said, with the recording of a revised construction plan to allow them to time-wise move in their schedule.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments, questions from the audience? Okay. Hearing none. If we want to move forward, is there a motion to grant St. Leo the Great a time extension request? Re, excuse me, request to allow completion of their project under Township File 11-02-FLD, subject to all engineering and staff comments.
So move.
Okay, motion by Mr. LaFever. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you and good luck. Up next, High, Highview Commercial, requesting a text amendment. And I'm going to turn this over at this time to our solicitor, Mrs. Byford. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a petition to amend the zoning ordinance to include a definition for drive-through restaurants, to add that use as a permitted use in certain zoning districts and to add use regulations for that permitted use. When, this is a hearing that has been advertised for tonight. The petitioners here, represented by counsel, they intend to make a presentation to the board. You should then take an opportunity to ask the petitioner any questions you have about the proposal and the proposed ordinance. You would then open it up to the public to take any questions for the petitioner or any public comment on the proposed changes. Once you then close the hearing, you have an ordinance before you and you can decide whether you wish to adopt that ordinance tonight or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Mike Davis from Barley Snyder. You're on behalf of the petitioner. I have with me Dave Gunnia from Highview Commercial, as well as Dennis Reichel from HRG. They are part of the project team. They will also be available to answer any questions that the board may have relative to the petition. We initiated this process by attending the November 9th, 2021 Planning Committee meeting to discuss a proposed Wendy's with a drive-through at the State Road Commerce Park property address, 2007 State Road. The site is zoned Enterprise Zone. At that time, we were looking for guidance from the planning committee on the treatment of drive-through restaurants in the enter, in the Enterprise Zone. As noted in the petition, and as some of you may recall from that meeting, the Enterprise Zone allows convenience stores and truck stop uses by right. The definitions of both of those terms include and allow drive-through, drive-in, or sit-down restaurants as part of the permitted use. However, the drive-through use as a standalone use is not permitted by right, by special exception, or by conditional use in the Enterprise Zone. Drive-through use is specifically defined in the zoning ordinance. Drive-through restaurants are not separately defined under the township's current zoning ordinance. Drive-through uses are permitted by right in the Community Business Center Zone and in the Regional Commerce Center Zone. Recognizing the apparent inconsistency in the treatment of drive-through restaurants in the Enterprise Zone, the question we posed to the planning committee was, would the township support a use variance for the proposed Wendy's? Or would it make more sense to pursue a text amendment to address the inconsistency? We were encouraged to pursue a text amendment, and that is the petition that you have before you this evening. Based upon that guidance, we worked with the township manager, the township zoning officer, the township engineer, and the township solicitor since early in 2022 regarding the content of the petition that's before you this evening. We received comments and recommendations from the township engineer and the township solicitor to our first draft of the petition regarding the scope and content of the petition, and we amended the petition accordingly. The petition includes the following items. A specific definition of drive-through restaurant, that's included in Section 14 of the petition. It also adds drive-through restaurant as a use by right in the CBC Zone, the Enterprise Zone, and the RCC Zone. That's included in Section 15 of the petition. And I would point out that the inclusion of the CBC and RCC Zones was based upon a recommendation of the township solicitor. It also creates use-specific performance criteria for drive-through restaurants. And they, these are articulated in Section 16. And then it also distinguishes between a restaurant and a drive-through restaurant, and that's included in Section 17 of the petition. And I would point out that that was included at the recommendation of the township engineer. The petition also articulates specific legal rationale for the requested amendment, and those are articulated in Sections 18 and 19 of the petition. This particular petition was reviewed by the Lancaster County Planning Commission, and per its letter dated May 3rd, 2022, the commission's staff recommended approval. They noted and categorized the request as, quote, "minor," close quote, in nature. They also noted that the requested change is consistent with places 2040. Just last week, we were before the Township's Planning Commission on May 11th, and at that time, we presented our petition, much as we are this evening. The Township Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed text amendment, indicating that the requested text change is consistent with the township's comprehensive plan. So with that overview, we are happy to answer any questions that the board may have relative to the petition and the corresponding proposed ordinance.
Are there any questions from the board?
I recognize the logic in including the drive-throughs in these other zones. I'm actually very fond of Wendy's restaurants. The intersection adjacent to this site, recently developed, has been a concern of mine regarding the potentials for difficult situations. And I travel this intersection frequently. I realize this is not the DED, the Design Development Stage. However, I know as these things move along, it's hard sometimes to retract or get back to what we maybe should have considered. And I'd like to know what may have been considered for egress for this drive-through at that specific location. I have two particular concerns. One is an acceleration lane exiting to the north where there's a steep embankment, there's much restriction, but nevertheless, vehicles exiting there need an acceleration opportunity as traffic is coming northbound from the intersection. Very much specifically, truck traffic needs that, particularly large trucks with slow-moving acceleration challenges. And so, again, and maybe I can only do a heads-up on this before design development, but I am do so, I am so doing, because it is a concern. And when we approve this, we approve it everywhere. So with that said, has there been any thought to how you might address my concerns?
First off, I appreciate your comments. And as was previously indicated, I mean, we are here tonight specifically as related to the zoning aspect. Obviously, until we have some idea of whether or not we can move forward with the project, we're not in a position to come forward with a fully-designed plan. Conceptually, we are aware of the concerns. I believe you articulated those previously as part of the approval of the 7-Eleven that's going on, on an adjoining property. So that is something that as we move forward, our engineer is aware of your concerns, and we're going to try to address those concerns as best we can.
Thank you. I appreciate your answer.
I'd also like to say you made a great presentation and really helped me understand a little bit more about this project. I, for one, wasn't quite aware of all that has gone into the preparation for the for the drive-through and how much direction that the staff has provided to sort of get things to where they are. I think it would be unfair for me to be, to not support this at this point. But I do, I, I say that number one, and would like to support, support this. But I do share some of the concerns that Mr. Weaver, Mr. LaFever just shared with, shared with us also. So hopefully, at some point in the process, you know, we can address that. You know, we, we both feel that there's a serious, potential serious issue there with ingress and egress. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? From the audience? Okay, at this point, do we close the hearing?
Correct.
So we will close the, the hearing. Then I guess we have a decision to make whether we are going to vote on this approval.
Correct. You have, you have a proposed ordinance that was prepared by the petitioner that you can consider for adoption.
Okay. Gentlemen, are you ready to move on this item? Okay, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 20? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 202209, which provides a definition of restaurant drive-through and adds the use as a permitted use in the community business center, regional commerce center, and enterprise zones with additional regulations for the use?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Russell, sir, second. Second by the chair. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, up next, we have the pickleball continued discussion. Just a little background here.
Mr. Chairman, just to jump in a little bit, 701 Stony Battery.
We don't want to do that to them. 701, we're gonna, excuse me, on that 701 Stony Battery Road.
I don't know that there's anybody present for that. This is essentially a acceptance of fee in lieu of curbing along the frontage of Stony Battery Road.
Okay.
So this is in connection with the Stony Battery Trail. And that was the, the discussions that staff and the engineer had with 701 is that if they would install the trail, we would then remove the condition for curbing. And there's a fee in lieu for the curbing to be removed.
Okay. Any discussion from the board on this?
Just, do we have an idea, Ms. Switzer, when the trail actually might begin at this point?
I believe that 601 is already under construction. You were just out there.
We met with 601, I met with 601 this week. They have some, some construction hurdles they have to get over on the boundary between 601 and 701. There's a hump and pole and gas line and water line and a lot of other stuff, but we met with them. I think the idea is that it's going to be constructed this, this summer. They were working with the contractor that built all of the three warehouses, 601, 701, and 799, to coordinate to get that all into one effort. So that was my understanding from meeting with them.
And then Bernard and the other park is the third, the fourth leg going up, Noel, was that coordinated?
KRM does have plans in place, which is at the corner of Stony Battery and Nolt. And then once that's completed, then the township will then be doing the lines from the rail line into links. And then on the other end at TE Connectivity, we'll be installing that trail and then running that line into that small shortcut between Stony to get to Kaufman. And then across Kaufman.
Okay, thank you.
When we met with them a few months ago, the, all the owners, we indicated to them that we wanted this completed by fall. And we heard feedback, how about late fall? So I think they are working towards that goal.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Back to the matter of the curbing, if we accept the fee in lieu, is that into perpetuity?
Yes.
What about the other properties along Stony Battery? Should, we should have conformity. Should there ever be a need for curbing? Or if there's a question comes up about curbing, I think we should have consistency along our side of Stony Battery. And I don't know if we should be reaching out to those properties and suggesting that we manage this uniformly or what?
We have, the general discussion is there is no stormwater on Stony Battery. So the need for curbing is probably slim to none. We have had discussions in connection with the trail system that with 701, 601, 791, and then KRM on the corner. You will be getting a fee in lieu of agreement from KRM as well for Stony Battery frontage.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay. In hearing none, is there a motion to authorize the signing of acceptance of the fee in lieu of curbing along the frontage of 701 Stony Battery Road?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, now up next is the continuation of the pickleball court discussion. We've been looking at this issue for quite a long time. We looked into switching pickleball with tennis courts. We looked at relocating pickleball to another location in the park. And we have determined that that is just not financially feasible at this time. Last week, we decided to keep pickleball at its current location. In our discussion last week, we talked about performing maintenance to the court and adding a fourth court. Mrs. Switzer had asked us to wait before we had finalized that discussion and had a vote to allow the neighbors their opportunity to make comment. It's my understanding that they are going to be online.
They are, yes. Mr. Gonzalez is there.
Okay. And at this point, we need to have that discussion. I think we need to make a hard decision and once and all for all, put this decision to bed. As elected officials, I believe we're responsible to do what's in the best interest of the community. Pickleball is a legitimate activity to have in our park. It's been in our park for six, eight years. Not sure.
Since 2014.
Since 2014, almost eight years. And I just think we need to make the decision to move on at this point. So let's open it up for discussion.
Just, Mr. Chair, real quick question. So the, just to reiterate, the decision was already made to keep it there. But right now, the decision is to talk about adding a fourth court at this point is what we're talking about tonight. Is that correct?
And I also believe to perform maintenance on the existing court as well.
Those are the two decision items at this point.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. At this point, the only comment I'd make is that the neighboring question was there before the pickleball courts were there.
Mr. Bennett, can you use your microphone?
The, the only comment I make at this point is that the, the neighbors involved were there before the pickleball courts went in. And this is, and this isn't really about pickleball. This is about the nature of the sound of group pickleball play and its impact on a person.
Okay. So I mean, with that, for me, it is about pickleball. It's about the activity. Is it going to be in our park? If so, where? We currently have a location of where it is. We voted unanimously at the last meeting to keep it at that location. And I'd highlight that it was a unanimous vote to keep it at that location. So our next question is, are we going to allow those that play pickleball in the community to maximize, in other words, there's unused pavement that's there now that's not being utilized for pickleball? This is not additional pavement. This is what's already there to create a fourth court. Are we going to do maintenance to that particular court to preserve it long-term or not? So I think that's the discussion we need to have as a board.
Well, again, I'd, again, I'd say an additional pickleball court would exasperate the situation for the, for the neighbors. There's no doubt about that. Would certainly increase during group pickleball play. It would increase the negative impact of the sound on the neighbors. I think we need to take that into consideration.
Any other comments?
I would, I've already suggested that we need to do maintenance. That was part of my making that suggestion. That was some feedback that we had gotten from the pickleball members was the courts are a little bit bad shape. And that was something that we had discovered when we were talking about flipping the courts with the tennis courts. I'm definitely in favor of maximizing what we have in our facilities before we build new at this point. So I'd be in favor of, and the fourth court and doing the maintenance.
Do we have a cost estimate to go with this resurfacing work?
No. We do not.
I have been a part of this, of course, from the beginning. And I, as one, still feel that the proposal to locate the pickleball court in another area of the park is feasible. The only problem, I believe, with that proposal was the funding. And I would like to see any funding expended go to that type of a new facility, even if it means we need to wait till we can afford it. I must ask the question, and I should have asked this maybe weeks ago. There is this cares money, which frankly, I don't know the definitions and limitations. But I'm wondering if there is not funding available through something like that to assist with this challenge that we have before us.
The, the money you're referring to is the ARPA funds, the American Relief Funding. The township is anticipated to get 2.5 million. We've gotten half of that money. We also have quite a few infrastructure projects that we're doing. And the Admin Finance Committee will be meeting at the end of the month to look at what we have going, what our cash flow is, what our needs are. And the ARPA money will be part of that discussion.
To put quite bluntly, we have probably five or $6 million worth of infrastructure needs at this point already. When you factor in Centerville, Overhurst Town Road Bridge, and the number of other things which we'll be talking about in two weeks, in many ways, the ARPA money is already spent.
And are these expenditures not going to occur over the next three to five and even unknown years? They are not something we have to do tomorrow. So I would request Finance Committee, look at this. I think they should be made aware and determine whatever improvements they think should be made to the existing courts and come back with a recommendation, whether they think that's an appropriate expenditure of funds for this township at this time versus possibly doing and stretching a bit to do something better.
So I have no problem in examining it and taking a look at it and highlighting exactly what our expenditures are going to be. I think we got a brief glimpse of what it's going to cost to move. And unless that number changes, I just, I'm going to be hard-pressed to be for, for dropping $150,000, $200,000 to do it, whether, whether it's ARPA money or, or a gift that was given to us. It's still our money to be spent as though, I mean, it's not our money. We should be spending it as though it's our own.
I think the other thing is differentiate between building new and doing maintenance. We have an obligation to maintain our existing facilities, both parks and roads. And that's the whole argument I'm making about maximizing what we have first before we build new. Every time we build something new, that's another thing in the future we have to maintain. And so right now, we need to keep up with the maintenance. Every year you defer maintenance on pavement, the expenses go up exponentially to fix that pavement. The more cracks develop, the harder it is, and the more expensive it is to maintain. And that's beyond the bigger discussion. That's well documented at this point. There's a difference between building new and doing maintenance. We can, I certainly have no problem talking about that in finance and admin. But there's a big difference between maintenance of an existing facility versus building a new facility at this point. And if we can't maintain our existing facilities, then we should not be building new facilities if we can't keep up with what we already have. And so we need to really focus on, we have a lot of expenses. We already talked about all of our infrastructure expenses. The good news is we're making some tremendous headway into the transportation problems in this township. State Road was just the introduction. Now we're working on Centerville Road. And as the two biggest headaches we had in the town, one egg is gone now, and Centerville Road will be next, but Centerville Road's not cheap. And we have a tremendous financial outlay that needs to occur for Centerville Road. But it's a township-owned road. It's not owned by the state. The state only owns the interchange itself. And with this 80/20 split of funding that we got right now for our Centerville Road, and that's helping us out tremendously to address that, but we still have our 20% of the bill we gotta pay. And I agree with you, Mr. Wiggles, with that ARPA money, it's like for me, the same idea as providing a bond for Centerville. It's our kids and grandkids. They're going to be paying that, that bill coming due with ARPA. It needs to go to infrastructure that's going to be around for 50 years, not for general fund expenses. So we have a tremendous amount of money. We're going to be outlaying as a township over the next couple of years. Almost all of it gone to roads and bridges. And as much as I like building facilities in the parks, I do. But if we don't keep up with our roads, you can't get to the parks.
So I just want to challenge one thing that you said there about our biggest headaches being State Route 283 and the State Route 30 project. I'd say this pickleball conversation is right up there with that. Any other comments from the board?
I guess I haven't weighed in yet. So I would like to see, as Mr. LaFever said, that we do consider in the future, whether it's a few years or five, six years, building something. It will be something that has to be maintained. Given the popularity of pickleball and the continuing growing of the members, that might be something that you could start working on. I'll bring up the bocce ball players who built their own facility. Now, this one, I think it's going to be a lot more than that, but I'm just going to throw that out there that maybe the pickleball players have a couple of years to start socking away some money too. My other thought is, the last meeting, I'm, I said justice is blind. I don't know if anyone heard me or not, but I don't know if you consider that a luxury. We don't really have that luxury. We are elected officials. And we need to represent the majority whenever possible. I mean, if the majority wants something that we can't legally do, then that's another matter. But in this case, we're all elected, so we have to act like it. So that's where I come down.
Any comments from staff right now on this?
No, looking for direction.
Okay. I think we've had quite a bit of flavor, and I think we understand both sides of that. So before I ask for public comment, I think please keep in mind that we, we do understand the issue. So go ahead, sir.
Richard Hendricks, 981 Founder's Way. Not, I admit I have not gone down and actually taken measurements on the courts, but it would appear that you could swap the tennis courts for the pickleball courts. And I think you can get six pickleball courts in the area that you currently have the three tennis courts. The foundation and the pavement's the same. It's a matter of painting new lines on it. And you can get two tennis courts where the pickleball courts are. So if tennis is not as popular, it may be a matter of simply switching the two.
And spend $260,000, sir. That's the other part of that equation. You missed that part.
If we're going to have to resurface courts, it doesn't matter where they are, which ones you're resurfacing. I mean, it, painting lines is not a $260,000 project.
With fence and other things, as we had, that's the information we're using.
We, we did actually look at that option. That came back actually pretty expensive at this point. So it was about the same as building there. Which is, I know, I was a little surprised too, because it was two of us that suggested that originally two, two meetings ago.
All right. Any other questions or any other comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Yep.
SteveNewcomer, 1791 Wickersham Lane. And just to add to that, the dimensions to put the dimensions to put six courts are not there. Those dimensions don't quite work. If you are going to put pickleball in its current location, I'm just throwing out a suggestion here that is if it's possible to put permanent nets in as part of the your maintenance efforts and maybe a little bit of fencing and the fencing required for pickleball is as little as a three or four foot fence. It's not a you don't necessarily need an eight foot fence like you do for tennis. So that's just something that maybe you can price that out in the scope of maintenance that if it's possible to include those, it will make those courts very much more playable than they currently are. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Joe Hallwager, my wife Donna, we live at 312 Treetops Court. We don't play pickleball. We do take advantage of the path around the entire park. That gives it advantage of seeing how the park is laid out. And I don't know how it evolved, but I would want to praise people that laid it out because, you know, we see the playground, which is excellent, the soccer courts, and we see the the gardens and the area where the pickleball is and the basketball courts have an entrance from there that you don't create a congestion that's up at the other end. My comment is, somebody's done a very fine job here. Take advantage of it and be proud of it and leave the pickleball courts where they are. And you know, the only reason we came here is we're tax players. And when I heard the cost of moving that, I thought this is just not feasible or sensible. If there's that much extra money, put it on Centerville Road or put it towards the police. Thank you.
Thank you. And from the audience. Okay, at this time, let's turn it over to Zoom.
Sure. So we have two public comments from Zoom, Fabian Gonzalez and Terry Gonzalez.
He's still on mute, I believe.
Mr. Gonzalez, you are unmuted, but we cannot hear you.
Can we hear Perry?
Yes, we heard Perry coughing earlier.
Yes, I'm here.
No, sir, we cannot.
Could find in possibly if something.
Okay, go ahead and call in.
I have his number. He can call us.
He has a number to call into you, right?
He can call into Zoom.
Okay.
Do you have the phone number to call into the Zoom meeting, Mr. Gonzalez?
Do you need a number, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, he just messaged.
So at this point, if we're having some technical difficulty, until he calls in, let's move on to some of the other items on the agenda. We're going to come back to this. So we will be back to this item on the agenda. Up next, we have the Agreement of Easements between the Mennonite Home and Little Conestoga Creek Foundation and the Township to allow creation of a section of the trail system in the emergency access area between Harrisburg Pike and Shiner Station Road. Who's running with this?
Diane, could you put the map up in the presentation folder? So the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation has reached out to the township and also Mennonite Home regarding the emergency access point between Harrisburg Pike and Shiner Station Road. That was given to the township for an emergency access point, should we need to get into or have people get out of Shiner Station Road because of flooding. So the the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation would like to put a trail through that area. To do that, they need easements, which is the documents that you have in your packet. Mennonite Home is supportive of the project. Little Conestoga would like the project and it's before the Board of Supervisors to see if that's something that would be interesting, interested to you. Mr. Schultz is on Zoom if you have any questions for him. On the screen is the actual area that we were talking about, Harrisburg Pike being to your left and then Shiner Station on the right. And that what they would be doing is creating the trail on the existing McAdam area.
Okay. And the responsibility of the maintenance of that trail?
Will be part of the Little Conestoga Creek, Conestoga Foundation project.
Any questions from the board or any comments from the board on this?
So funding from the township would come through our participation in the Conestoga project.
The McAdam is already there. So any lining, Mr. Schultz, are you planning on lining that area?
Probably not.
Okay, so it would just be a walking path on existing McAdam. There's no expense. It's already there.
It would be our responsibility, whatever we would do to the path, to maintain it in the future. And there's no money involved from the township. What this is about is going after state funding to do this portion of it as well as a portion to the west on Good Drive.
Any, any questions or comments from the audience on this? So with that, is there a motion to authorize the signature on the easement that will allow the creation of a section of the trail system in the emergency access area between Harrisburg Pike and Shiner Station Road?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion cares five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see, Mr. Gonzalez has arrived, so we'll go back to the pickleball conversation. Mr. Gonzalez, if you'd like to come forward and speak.
I do apologize for the technical difficulties. Microphone was working. I'm not sure what happened. I'm going to take a moment to catch my breath. First of all, I stand here embarrassed the representation we have at this township meeting. At the expense of a mental health issue, at the beginning of this conversation on this agenda item, everyone was laughing and commenting, same situation was the last meeting. You know, I questioned the board. Do we live in a democracy? Anybody? Do we? So how many times do we have to vote in order to appease, to address a mental health issue? How many times? It does not cost $200,000.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, I want to hear what you have to say, but you have to calm down and we will listen to you.
I'm not going to calm down.
We're not going to have, we are not going to have yelling and screaming at the meeting. You either conduct yourself professionally or we're going to cut you off. So I'm going to ask you nicely. We want to hear what you have to say. If you have something constructive, please say it.
Okay, I asked if the board, please go back and revisit how much it costs to remove four, two tennis nets, patch four holes, re-strike six courts on the existing location of the tennis courts. If you go back two years ago, it costs less than $10,000 to remove two volleyball poles, patch two holes, repaint and re-strike both the basketball court and three existing pickleball courts. We did it in good faith. We'd asked, Mr. Bennett had asked us in good faith. This is a good first step. We did that. It did not mitigate the sound issue. Again, I have a question for the board. Do you understand what issue we're dealing with? What is the issue? Anybody? Do you have an understanding what the issue is?
I think we all do.
What is the, what is, what is the issue?
That you folks are upset about the noise from pickleball?
That's not the issue.
Okay, well, that's.
It's a mental health issue.
Okay.
Recognized, you have a, you have a noise ordinance. Okay, 170-6. It's clearly in black and white. Says noise disturbance, any sound which endangers or injures the safety or health of humans or animals. Talking about a mental health issue, the pitch of the ball and the impact it has on the paddles. Okay, unless you recognize that, you will not, we will not come to a conclusion. Because then at that point, you have to recognize with the American Disabilities Act and you have to act upon that. It's a law. You are violating that law. Any sound or disturbance and noise or disturbance, a reasonable person of normal sensitivities or endangers or injures personal or real, real property. This has been a mental health issue for the past two years. We're asking the board to reconsider. It does not cost $150,000. It costs you $10,000, less than that, $7,500 two years ago to redo what you currently have today. And by considering adding a fourth court, as far as the resident who said the minimal height requirement, you need to go back and do a sound study. Because all sound studies require at least an eight foot high fence with some sort of a sound attenuation barrier, just like you have at the tennis courts, to reduce the decibels that the that the sound makes. I think my wife sent Cindy an email from a engineer who has extensive background with pickleball setup and court and everything. He outlined it in his, in his letter that we sent to Cindy. I'm hoping you all got a copy of that. You need to read through that. I asked you to, please, because this is not a done deal. So until the board recognizes we are dealing with a mental health issue that's having a severe effect on our quality of life, based on your own noise ordinance, you need to reconsider the option of removing two tennis courts, paint your six, whatever lines you need for your six courts, park is coming in. We understand that's going to be an impossibility at that point because we have to, we have to accommodate the children. My kids went to Hark. I'm sure all of our kids went to Hark. That's an important factor. We're not, we're not disputing that. But we do take issue. We will continue to take issue. We will continue to fight the fight until this township recognizes that we are dealing with a mental health issue that could have adverse effects on a person's quality of life within this township. You have an obligation as township supervisors for the health and well-being of all the residents, whether it's just two of us or a whole community. You have that obligation. You were voted to that position and we ask that you stick to what you you were voted upon to do what you're supposed to be doing as representatives of this township and the responsibilities to all the members of this community. Thank you.
So at this point, does the board feel like we need any more discussion on this matter? Okay, Mrs. Pfeiffer, are you comfortable with us taking action on this matter tonight?
Yes, that's fine. I don't know if there was more public comment or not.
Is there any more public comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Donna Hallwager and I live at 312 Treetops Court in Lancaster. And I would just like to add a suggestion. I am a very retired registered nurse. But I want to explore another possibility. Is it at all possible for the township to consider providing extra soundproofing to this home rather than moving everything around the park? Certainly, there's wonderful options in that field that could be more economically feasible and let the pickleball courts stay where they are and would also solve some of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. At this point, are there any other comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Jerry Clase. I live at 1352 Jasmine Lane. I just want to say, if that was my wife, he lives in the noisiest house in Hemphill Township. He's on the busiest, busiest road. I've listened to the truck traffic go by there. The sirens from the police station are going, do something, take his own, he should take the initiative and do something to protect the interests of his wife. Not not come after 75 other people. That we have health issues too, and pickleball really goes a long way to accommodating health in our elder age. So, you know, do something on your own. You know, take the initiative yourself. The solution is in his hands. It's not in yours. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think what I'd like to see, if we're done talking about it, I think we've heard from the audience, I think we've heard from Mr. and Mrs. Gonzalez. So based on our last meeting, the outstanding issue is whether we're going to proceed with maintenance and installing the fourth court at this location. So is there a motion to that effect?
If that's your motion, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell. Second by the chair. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed signify by saying no.
No.
Motion carries three to two. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have the Lancaster Clean Water Implantation, Implementation, Grantee Partnership Agreement.
I'm sorry. Yeah. So the township was fortunate enough to be granted a grant from the Lancaster Clean Water Implementation Partnership. That agreement is in your packet. It's a grant of 302,302,316. It's a grant of $302,302,316, $100 for the creating wetlands in the eastern quadrant of Aheer Park. This wetlands creation will also include a trail around it. So I'd like the permission from the board to sign that agreement so that we can get started on that project.
This will help the flooding issue that we talked about, Parkview Drive and a couple of the other areas. They're a little bit downstream by taking up some of the water. And then we also have the other issue we're working on getting the areas cleaned out down by what McFarland in that area, Ms. Switzer?
Yes.
So this is a good, good first step to addressing a known flooding problem that's been caused by the buildup sediment in that, that watershed area. So this will correct the problem.
Any other discussion?
Street thing?
Any comments, questions from the audience? Hearing none, is there a motion to authorize the signature on the contract to accept the $302,316 and 93 cent grant award to expand the wetland area on the eastern quadrant of Aheer Park? Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have the Hempfield Water Authority request of the board to consider a water connection ordinance. There's a sample provided from Warwick Township.
So I was approached by Jay, Jason Hess, who is their attorney. The Water Authority has asked him to request the board consider a water connection ordinance, which is very similar to what you have in your packet from Warwick Township. The town, the Jason, Mr. Hess is willing to draft the ordinance and get it prepared for presentation to the board supervisors if there's interest in pursuing it. I also reached out to Lancaster City Water. Their attorney is looking at it to see if it would be necessary for them to also be included. They're a bit different, different because they are under the PUC regulations, but they're looking at it. So if we're gonna do it for one, we might as well do it for both of them. We already have a connection ordinance for LaSwama, not LaSwama, Lassa, the sewer authority. We don't have one for water.
How many lots are currently within 1,000 feet of a water line and not hooked up?
Couldn't answer that question. Going back to the authority.
I personally would like answers to that before I'd even consider something like this because I have, not saying our authority would do this, but I have seen this in other municipalities where this takes away all debate and discussion and becomes a one-sided hammer on property owners at this point. And right now, the authority kind of has to negotiate hookup versus basically dicting hookup. I just have some issues with that personally. And I would like to know a sense of magnitude of what we're talking about. I know of only one real area south of 283 that's, the whole area is unhooked up. Mr. Bingham's area. And I'm not sure if there's any other areas at this point. And I know those are some very physical constraints as to why they can't hook up in an economical manner. So I'd just like to see more information before we go down this road.
I'll reach out to Mr. Go.
So, and if I understand the, their letter, they're trying to enforce backflow, if I read his letter correctly, to prevent contamination to the water system?
What that is, if the one of the steps is when you do a mandatory hookup, you also have to discontinue, disconnect any wells that you might have. That's what the backflow is. So municipal authorities always concerned about well water from an untreated source getting mixed in with the treated water source from an authority. So that's why that language is in there.
So I share the concerns. I guess I do see their need. Is it possible that it can be crafted in a way that addresses your concerns?
I just, I think maybe this first step is not something we need to rush. I just want to know, we talked about five properties at this point. I mean, for Lassa, they were down to like two properties that are in the window where they could be required to hook up in the whole township. So I'd be just kind of curious to see what the magnitude is or it might be reasons why some of those properties haven't hooked up. And so, I mean, I'd just like more information before I feel comfortable going down this road personally.
I thought part of what I saw somewhere was about backflow preventers, which I don't think that's a problem. It's more the fact of having to hook up to the system, I guess. Is that what your thought is?
That's my concern here.
Okay, so at this point, hearing the discussion, we'll table it and send staff back with the concerns and a little homework to do. That, right, we understand basically how many wells we're talking about or properties that we're talking about is some of the information we need to move forward. Okay, up next, draft ordinances, request permission to advertise and submit to planning commissions for their review and recommendations, farm-based businesses, home-based businesses, parking requirements, effective zoning hearing board decisions and outdoor storage.
So for the five you've heard before, you've discussed them before. The fifth one, the outdoor storage of particularly recreational vehicles. We had an incident between two neighbors and looked at the ordinance very carefully and it's worded poorly and needs some revisions. It looks like some of the areas have been removed from renditions and versions that have transpired. And that is what that one is about.
Did that go through public safety or?
It did not.
You mean, you mean planning, right?
Well, planning and public safety, right? Because I'm assuming the police are gonna have to enforce it.
This will be on, on lot, not in the street.
Oh, on lot.
Storage of vehicles, storage on recreational vehicles on the lot.
Okay, so this will be, it'll just be staff zoning, okay. Okay, any comments on, on these?
Yes, as I reviewed the home-based business impact, I did not find anything that addressed signage. And I think that can become very critical in residential areas where you have a home-based business and that there needs to be an understanding of what that may be.
I believe that signage is addressed for home base in the sign regs.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah, that wasn't part of what was, was updated with this, just the allowance of the, of the use by right. Right now, if you want to do it, I believe you need to get zoning hearing board relief to, to move forward with that. Now this would allow somebody to move forward with, without that.
So there is already sign criteria in the sign portion, portion of the ordinance that addresses home-based business and that is not changing, I think.
I thought I saw something that you weren't supposed to do anything that would change the appearance of the outside of the building, which I figured, I, since I have one, I was kind of interested in that myself. And I didn't see, I saw that and I assumed that that meant no signs.
I think you're allowed a very small sign, maybe two by three.
Realtor type sign possibly.
Yeah.
Type sign.
Yes. Because the intent is to keep it home-based.
No, I meant the impact. I'm sorry.
I don't think it would hurt to have a reference to that in this.
It, it would, it would change the character of how people look at the ordinance, zoning ordinance, to determine what kind of signage they are required to have. They all refer to the sign section of the zoning ordinance, which addresses what you can have for a home-based business impact.
Internal or external changes which will make the dwelling appear less residential are prohibited, which to me would include signs, but maybe it should be spelled out more specifically. But it sounds like we already have something in another section that would cover that.
Within that proposed, within that section, section nine of that does call up parking and sign regulations and articles seven and eight shall apply. So there is a reference within the ordinance to those sections already. Just saying that they, where you would go to find that.
Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments on these ordinance changes from the audience? Hearing none, is there a motion to authorize staff to send ordinances to the planning commission for review and comment and to advertise the ordinances that include changes to the farm-based business, home-based businesses with impact, parking requirements, effects of zoning hearing board decisions and outdoor storage of recreation vehicles?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, DCED and WRPP grant submission.
So we're seeking another grant. This was one that Charity Burkhardt from DMA talked to someone about another grant that we applied for, which is for the stream restoration through the golf course and the back end of Hark. That project is over $800,000. We are seeking grant money from that first source. In, in the conversation, they found out about the second source, which is also DCED Watershed Restoration and Protection Program. And that cap is a $300,000 grant. We are asking the town, the board supervisors for permission to submit that grant through resolution 2219. It is a 15% match, which amounts to $45,000. But I believe you can play the other grant off of the current one.
Yes, and, and the other thought was if we don't get the full amount in the first one, we may get enough out of this one to put them together to get a total ask. And we were strongly, strongly recommended by DCED to apply for this grant for this particular project because they thought it was a very good fit too.
It does, we get, do we get credit for administrative and stuff like that for matching?
I don't remember if in kind was allowed for this.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
But the total outlet would be no more than what, if we, the one grant we were going for was for the bulk, the whole project. If we don't get all of that, when we would get this one and put them together and the matches would still be cumulatively the same. Because often you don't get the full amount that you, that you ask for.
Just for my, what's the project limits exactly on here in the golf course and on the Hark?
The golf course would be, I guess it would be the southern. If you're at the clubhouse, I don't know the, the whole numbers, I apologize.
And then is it the whole length of Hark from all the way to the snap or Dan?
Yeah, the length, the length of Hark and then across sort of the, the couple of fairways that come out of the, the clubhouse at the golf course and then over to what would be like the southern sort of limits of the property there.
And this would be ahead of PennDOT's project too then.
Timing wise.
We're not sure the, the timing.
Yeah. They would coordinate, it would coordinate with whatever PennDOT does.
But you never spotted enough, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the audience? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve resolution 22-19, which authorizes the submission of a $300,000 grant application to the Department of Community and Economic Development Watershed Restoration and Protection Program for the Golf Course Recreation Center Stream Bank Restoration Project?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Russell is there a second? Second from the chair, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, 2022, 2023 Insurance Renewal.
So the township uses Engel, Hambrighton, Davies as their insurance broker. They go out to various agencies and come back with quotes. Travelers has been our insurance company for quite some time. Our insurance renewals on May 29th, what you have before you is a proposal for insurance for 2223 and it represents a 3% increase, which is very good for the industry.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the renewal policies from Engel, Hambrighton, Davis for the township's general insurance policies?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, Assistant Township Manager, appointment of Diane Garber as Assistant Township Manager Secretary.
So I made a job offer to Diane Garber for the position of Assistant Township Manager. She was our emergency management coordinator and will continue to be that position. She also helped us very much with setting up the fire services committee that we currently have. Diane has been a full-time employee with the township since 2020 as the emergency service coordinator. Prior to that, she was the EMA for us in a voluntary capacity and then a contracted capacity for the past 10 years. So we're very familiar with, with the capabilities of Diane and if there's an emergency, she's the person you want to have on scene. She's well-educated with a bachelor's in sports and exercise science and also a master's in emergency management.
Would you like to say anything?
Thank you for the, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate your confidence in my ability.
Say that now.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Any other discussion, comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business.
Have we buried the question of a security fence around the township office?
We have not. It is in process, I hope. Perry was working on specifications to get a bid, which is what we need to do. Our first task was to relocate the gardens. We found a place, which is on Nissley Road. Those are being created by the end of the year and then they'll be ready for spring next year. So it seems like we can move forward with the quote for the fence, which I believe we have in our budget of $45,000.
Yes, I have, I have started the process. I have contacted a number of fence contractors and we are really close to getting the bids out so we can, we can have that, you know, possibly started by midsummer.
Was there a scope defined with maybe something a bit more decorative to the south and utility chain link the rest or gates or how is that part?
Yes, we are, we are looking at, it would be like a black aluminum six-foot fence, a decorative fence that would have, I believe they're like three, three-quarter inch spindles in the middle with two and a half inch end posts, some kind of a, there, there's several different patterns you can pick from, little decorative things on the top of the posts. Very, very little chain link. It will be at the very back towards the public works buildings and that, that will be it. We'll be able to connect to the fence that goes on Amtrak. We'll be able to go right up against that. So we really don't have to do much behind any of the structures there. But I think it's 570 feet of the decorative fence and roughly only about 176 feet of chain length. But I, I believe we can get this accomplished this summer here yet.
Manual gates at this time?
No gates at all. We, we were not planning on any gates simply because of police vehicles going in and out. There isn't a gate fast enough that will accommodate police vehicles, I don't believe. But that's what was proposed. It would just have signage at every entrance that would say, no, you know, no vehicles or, or people beyond this point.
So if we have a challenge or an incident, you'll volunteer your trucks to put them across the opening?
Oh, I'd block them. I got, I got enough dump trucks to block them also.
Okay.
It was the focus of the police department and after their security analysis that. It was the focus of the police department and after their security analysis that they really needed a defined area. And the fence provided that, the, the, the gate was probably not necessary, but we could always add that in the future. But it was really just defining the perimeter of the campus.
So any question I guys, timing, when is the people gonna be out of our community gardens at the current location?
Spring of next year.
Or would it be fall of this year is when the growing season is over? You're not gonna be playing in the winter time, right?
No.
When it makes sense to put the fence up once the last of them are done with the community gardens that we're not, we, we basically are established at this point on, it's just authorized personnel that are gone. Right now, it's still unauthorized personnel going past that location until that community garden is gone. So.
We can either bid it now or, or wait a few months and then structure that it starts as of late fall.
Yeah, because I think my personal belief would be that it should be a clean break. If they're, when we close the community gardens down, which would be this fall, after the fall season, that's it. Everybody's out. And then at that point on, it's just authorized personnel. They're going there. But before that, putting up authorized personnel signs and then still having the community drive through is not just
Confusion. Yeah.
This seems a little bit of backwards a little bit. So.
Material may dictate that anyway. I, I, I was in contact with a couple producers and one company actually was shut down for a little bit. So that it, it may not be until late fall till we even could get the material. So, but that's not a problem. We can, we can wait till the gardens are shut down and, and install it then.
Okay. Any other questions related to old business comments? Any new business? Hearing none, public comment. Is there anyone that would like to make some public comment?
Good evening. My name is Aaron Marinus. I'm an attorney at Russell Craft and Gruber. And I represent a number of people that live along North Lawn Drive, also a township resident at eight one eight Sylvan Road. I'd like to make, and I have some of these folks with me tonight, we'd like to make some comments on the proposed Homestead Village apartment project. And I fully admit this might be a little bit premature. But I've also found that it's best to engage in conversation early in the process rather than a little bit too late. So my understanding is that Homestead Village has submitted a plan to the township to build an apartment building of eighty seven feet high, some hundred and some apartments. And that was submitted in April, the end of April. We have a right to know request, just trying to mash up all the dates for that. I don't believe the township supervisors or staff have really even cracked it open yet. So that's why I say this might be a little bit premature, but I like to get our, our feelings out on the record. The Homestead Village is in the campus zoning district. The campus zoning district requires a updated master plan to be provided every five years or anytime there's a change. And whenever there's a change, it needs to be reviewed by the supervisors and the township planning commission. The zoning ordinance doesn't say that it has to be approved, it said it has to be reviewed. So what we've seen and what I believe has been presented to the township and certainly what's been advertised in Lancaster newspaper, on YouTube, on billboards to, to neighbors is a apartment building, again, six stories high, eighty seven feet. The Lancaster newspaper article said they have apartments between eleven hundred and sixteen hundred square feet to be used for, for residents and for personal care. If one member of a couple needed additional care, they could be treated in sort of age and place. And that that would, that would be going in on the, on the edge of the campus. It's also called an apartment building in the December twenty twenty one revisions to the Homestead Village master plan. It's called apartments in advertisements and in YouTube videos. The reason why I keep on bringing up this labeled as apartments is the zoning ordinance in the campus zone says apartments and personal care homes are an accessory use to the to, in the campus zone. It's mainly for assisted living and hospitals and things like that. So apartment buildings are accessory use. And that's important because primary uses are allowed by rights to go ninety feet high. And accessory uses are limited to forty five feet high. So my understanding is that Homestead Village hasn't requested any zoning relief from this forty five foot height requirement for their proposed apartment buildings. And generally, the board of supervisors would require an applicant to receive all necessary zoning approvals before they looked at the plan and, and ruled on the plan. So that's one of the reasons why I thought we'd get out here just a little bit early. That if zoning relief is necessary for this plan, that you can send them there before you open it up to, to your own decisions. And so to make sure they get the zoning relief, not have zoning relief before you review the land development plan. I also understand sort of on a tangential note that there is a proposed tax amendment by someone other than Homestead Village to change some of the provisions of the campus zone. But that is going to be reviewed. That was on tonight's agenda and got pushed back to June. And that one of the, one of the requests to that is to raise the height of these accessory uses by right from forty five feet to sixty feet. So those two things are, are going to run in parallel, it, it seems, before, before this board. And obviously, my, my folks are, are going to be against that. And one reason is, I just wanted to bring that up is to remind you that the campus zoning districts, you know, it includes that brand new hospital on State Road where there's nothing around it. But it also includes places like Homestead Village and includes places like the help campus and the high school and Centerville middle school, grade school campus that are completely surrounded by long established and well existing residential zones. And so a text amendment to change the height of apartment buildings, personal care homes and other things doesn't only affect out there on State Road and Harrisburg Pike, but affects all these neighborhoods, too. And, you know, we'll know the text amendment when we see it, but I'm hoping you'd consider that. And like I said, hoping that you consider sending the, the plan for apartments to zoning to get a variance before the board examines and rules on the land development plan. Like I said, I have some residents of the North Lawn Drive here to share some of their personal experiences and concerns as well. Thank you for your time.
Just so I understand, the, the main question, I guess, you have for us or for our staff, because we, we have not yet been presented with the plan. And I'm, I'm not really exactly sure what it is you're talking about, but I think I have the gist for it, that staff needs to decide whether this is an accessory use or whether this is a principal use.
That's correct. And whether it needs zoning approval or not.
Okay. Okay, I think, I think I follow.
Do we understand your objection is in height exceeding forty five feet?
That's right. I mean, the, the, the use itself, whether it's an apartment or a personal care home, they are both permitted by right as accessory uses. But the campus zoning district has a list of what the primary uses and a list of accessory uses. And everything Homestead Village has said is this is one of those accessory uses. So yes, our, you know, the, the folks behind me, their objection is to how high it is. They really don't have any grounds to object to whether it be used for an apartment or assisted living or nursing home or anything like that. But it's the height.
So they could do two at forty five feet?
They could do two beside each other at forty five feet. Yes. And that's a whole nother concern for you guys.
Thank you.
My name's Paul Calora. I live at six oh two North Lawn Drive. I'm actually affected by this building more than anybody. I've seen the schematics and the building literally comes within ninety feet of my back property line. I bought the property in nineteen eighty one, when it was just a cornfield behind me with pheasant and fox running around. Homestead Village came two or three years after we moved in, that we built a house. We'd been in it since nineteen eighty three. And we've developed our backyard so that we could blunt the two-story presence of Homestead Village. And it works very nicely right now. But imagine a six foot, I mean, a sixty, seventy, six-story building ninety feet off your backyard. It's going to be enormous. It's probably taller than any of the thirty five to forty year old trees on my property. It's, it's just so outlandishly out of character for this family neighborhood. It's going to block the sun. They're going to be looking down on me, literally. There'd be lights all over my backyard at night, looking into my bedroom window. It, noise between that building and the property line, they plant a road. That's going to be fifty feet from my property line. I think that's the necessary setback. Right now, I can hear trucks at, at Homestead Village, which is five hundred feet maybe from the property line. So this is almost untenable. Anyway, I, I know I can't probably torpedo the building, but the height really is what is at issue here. Six stories is bigger than any building I'm aware of in East Emfield Township. And if there is a six-story building, maybe the new hospital is, it's not in or backed up against a family neighborhood. You know, there's a big buffer of other stuff around it. So that's, please consider that. The, the legalities of accessory use and this and that, I'll leave to Mr. Marinus. But the height is, is really untenable. Thank you for hearing me.
Good evening. My name is Tom Daniels. I live at five nine zero North Lawn Drive. Let me provide a little bit of additional context to what you've heard so far. And that is Homestead Village presented a sketch plan to the township that was approved as part of a preliminary plan waiver back in January of twenty twenty one. If you look at that sketch plan, you will see that there is a proposal for two buildings. And last month, the three of us who are here as property owners, individually, we met with Homestead Village, at which they expressed that they were changing their plan to build one building six stories high, rather than the two buildings relatively forty five feet high. So there is a provision in your subdivision ordinance that if there is a major change in an approved or waived preliminary plan, that you can ask the developer to go back and revisit that and go through the regular preliminary plan process, which is something I would ask for. Dr. Calora is correct that a, a six-story building is simply a little bit beyond what we call human scale. And I'm not so concerned about perhaps, you know, the impact on property value to my property, but I do have a nice patio in the back and it faces onto Homestead Village. And my enjoyment of my property would be considerably diminished with a six-story building. I could live with a forty five foot building. I don't have a problem with that. So I, I appreciate your attention and thank you for the opportunity to talk with you this evening.
Hello, my name is John Fuso. I'm at five ninety six North Lawn Drive between Tom and Paul. And my backyard also backs up to Homestead Village. Just want to make it on the record that I object to a ninety story or ninety foot building directly abutting a residential neighborhood. It really is not in, in the, in keeping with the environment. I have concerns for certainly property value as well as my family, you know, but at night sleeping with lights shining in and general overall noise level. And it's too high of a, a building to be put right against a, a residential property, in my opinion, and should be reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there any other public comment this evening? Any comment on Zoom? Hearing none, managers report.
So the Sentinel Road widening project, the let date has been moved to the middle of July. So that's hopefully progressing along, but they are having problems with the utility agreements and getting them in line. Church Street paving has been, the let date on that has been moved to June ninth. I think I mentioned the last meeting. That's now a twenty three, twenty four project. Old Roarstown Road Bridge, significant things have happening there. We actually have a bidder, J D Ekman. The project came in for construction at two point six million dollars. Their projections back in twenty eighteen, that projection was two point one million. So they're over budget. So we're gonna have to see and make sure that the funding situation is taken care of at the, the Penn Dot and federal level on that project. Farmingdale Road, we're still awaiting word back from Penn Dot. They seem to be a little bit slow. They said thirty days. It's been over that and, and we just need to wait and keep bothering them. But as soon as that is approved by Penn Dot, then we can go out for bid on that.
Are we, we resolved the property owner issue at this point?
Yes, everything's resolved.
Okay.
Yes, everything is resolved. The Noel Drive and Good Timing issue for Homestead and the crossing there at Noel and Good is in process. Again, we're awaiting Penn Dot's response so that we can move forward and get that timing scheduled and, and changed. You saw the Lancaster Clean Water Partners grant and, and addressed that this evening. The Dairy Road, we're awaiting programming budgeting numbers from McMahon Associates. We have two grants for that. And so we can move forward in that, but need to fine tune and then get that out to bid. Stony Battery Road, we briefly talked on that. I think that's underway and hopefully will be a fall completion. The staff met to discuss project projections and cash flow and where we stand with some of our projects. I was amazed when I pretty much data dumped my file cabinets into a spreadsheet to see what all those projects are. And there's quite a few of them. So we're going to continue to fine tune that and get that spreadsheet to some sort of, something presentable that we can then discuss it rationally at the admin finance meeting. Talked about the insurance renewal, Noel. Staffing, we talked about Diane Garber for the Assistant Township Manager. I also wanted to let you know that Nate Sturgis had accepted the position of Township Planner. And that left a position open for a zoning officer. We do have a person in mind. She has accepted the position and will be in place by the end of May. We also hired Tanya Hellman as our admin assistant. She is part-time. That helps the planning department. The Penn State Medical, Penn State and the Medical Office Building is going through their final inspection process. They hope to have that, a certificate of occupancy issued in June. Group reports, I do have quite a few meetings scheduled. We did have a public safety meeting this evening. Do you want to run through that maybe or what we discussed? If I can find my agenda, I can do that as well. Sorry about that. Chief, Chief Brubaker updated us on the promotions that occurred tonight, as well as some changes. Chief, Chief Brubaker updated us on the promotions that occurred tonight as well as some changes and shifting that will occur in the department as they regroup from the number of changes that they've had over the last couple of months with promotions and hiring. As well as we discussed the hotel ordinance that you approved previously at your meeting and how that's going to be implemented through, through the CID. And then we discussed, as we did in Traffic Commission, Littit's Road and Seventy Two and the immediate upgrades that have been made there, the short term projects that are in place or I'm sorry, that are in progress with McMahon Associates and their traffic study. And then the long term, which of course is in the hands of PennDOT and their traffic study to determine what it looks like for that intersection. And of course, then the adjoining roadways that will be impacted at that intersection as well, potentially Greystone and Bimini and Kreider Way, Kreider, Kreider, Kreider Lane. And just what that all looks like long term and ensuring that we're not making changes one place that have detrimental impacts elsewhere. We also discussed the Fire Commission. That meeting has been postponed from last night to May thirty first, when they'll meet and discuss a number of issues that Chief Kotmeyer is hoping to get agreement on amongst the entire group. You do have my planning report there, which is very brief. You have the amendment, text amendment, which was pushed from tonight's meeting to June first. You also will be hearing the Marietta LLC petition to rezone, which is at twenty five thirty two Marietta from median density residential to, that's not right. Low density residential to medium density residential is what it should say. And that will be heard on June, June first. Also, as you, you just heard, we did receive the Homestead Village building expansion plans. They're moving through the review process. I don't think even Scott Hain has even opened them up yet at this point. So we haven't done the zoning review. We haven't done anything at this point. It's a very new submission. We also recently got, like yesterday, the application for a conditional use for the Root property, which is at the corner of Littit's Road and Root Road, which is for a solar field, something we haven't experienced before, but they want to put a solar field in that area. And Brookside, their pad next to Sheets, they have come in with plans for a combination bank and restaurant. And that's also in the review process. The end of my report unless there's questions.
Any questions or comments?
The matter of Brookside that was withdrawn from this evening is, I believe, the same question that we just were experienced with the Homestead matter.
Mr. LaFever, can you use your microphone, please?
And if we, if we deal with that one way at Brookside, it of course will apply throughout the township. And so it's a question, I think, before this board that needs to be considered before we need to take one of these actions is, are we going to allow these buildings in excess of our ordinance of forty five feet?
There wasn't an amendment made at the very last minute, which is why it was pushed on your agenda based on comments from the Planning Commission. And that was the concern raised at the Planning Commission, the height of the building. I have not reviewed, I know it was like a one liner that addressed side and front and rear yard setback requirements. So they may have already addressed the concern as part of that text amendment. I'm going to have to look at that.
I thought possibly it might have also been the, the access egress for the drive through there because of distance from the intersection, one of which is determined off Harrisburg Pike, but are they going to go down behind Sheets to get back into traffic or how that's going to be dealt? I'd like to hear how they plan to do that. Again, it's design development, but.
Well, and also, Mr. LaFever, though, it may or may not be, I think, staff has to review it. And if I understand him correctly, there, whoever submitted it on Homestead's behalf is claiming it's a principal use and that they do not need relief. So I think that's step one. It might not be apples to apples. So I think staff needs to advise us and, you know, make a determination and give us some more information on that moving forward. So I think the project at, at Brookside is, is, has an understanding that their use is accessory. And Homestead, at this point, it sounds like, is claiming that their use is principal. And if that, if that is indeed the case, then there's going to be nothing at this point for us to, to do. So I think that's step one is let's review that.
Well, we are possibly at a crossroads for this township with growing pains. That is a significant question in my mind is how we are going to have the future of this township. And if we start going to buildings of that height, it will blossom, it will grow, it will continue.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you. I'm just saying, I think the first step for us is, let's find out if it's a use that's by right, if it is a principal use. And I don't think we should lump it in together just yet, is what I'm saying. So there's.
Staff and the engineer will, will look at that and, and as well as Ms. Pfeifer concerning how they interplay with one another before any of them get before you for decision. And it sounds like twenty seven oh one text amendment will be the first.
If so, I'd sort of like to know how we got there. How we are at a point where it is determined that it's a principal use and therefore we can allow building heights higher because we should have never done that, in my opinion. Well, so. We've been given a heads up, which I think is appropriate. And I think we need to prepare in our thoughts how we're going to deal with it.
Any other, any other comments? Okay, then I would like to adjourn the meeting. I'd also like to call for an executive or session for an employee issue. So if you guys could join us in the conference room.
Want to do the Traffic Commission report?
Sure, you can ask.
Yes, excuse me, before we adjourn, the Traffic Commission report.
After I'm not opposed to skipping it.
I don't know.
We discussed a few traffic studies.
I don't.
Senate Road was the main one. We also went through some prior studies as well. And we spoke about at length, a Wheatland Avenue complaint and got some updates on some other traffic issues and problems. And that was pretty much it. Okay. All right, we're adjourned into executive session and we will not return.
It is, it's run by, by the rec. I think there's a separate commission that deals with this. I think one or two of the supervisors are on, on a, on a committee that deals with the rec center. We were not asked, we were not asked.
Yes, that was actually, that hasn't come off. That was from.
For this property and we gave them costs for that. I know. The township has the option to go with CoStar's pricing, which is already, it's like sleep approved. You don't have to bid it. So it's supposed to be the lowest price that they can get. We use those pricing numbers to price out what the options were for these, these two things, the switch or for the new court. And that's where we came up with those. This wasn't something they directed us to look at at all.
Do we have any hotspots at this point? That's all I care about. Okay. I just, all I care about is a hotspot.
There were costs for excavation. The fence, the fencing was a significant number in, in the driving of, of the cost for the others, not here.
Doesn't require.
Yeah.
Who's, who's on that committee? How do I find out?
I don't, Mr. Russell may know. He had a question regarding the rec center.
About the rec center.
Yeah. I cannot imagine that they're heavily utilized. One of the options could be to consider, because the surface looks fine, okay, it may just be a matter, because you can get three pickleball courts in place of two tennis courts. So if you wanted to, you could get six pickleball courts and still leave six tennis courts up there and have minimal expensive foul. Yes, the people here would have to move, but it's not like it's, you know, all the way on the other end of Lancaster County. It's about an eight minute car ride to get to the rec.
I don't know. I, I do know that they run tournaments there and they use all the tennis courts. I don't know what their, how their response would be. They're a different organization from us.
Are they? They're not part of the township?
No, so it's a, it's, they represent all four municipalities. They're independent of us.
Okay.
So.
Somehow I thought that was part of.
No, we, we own the property and technically they rent it from us for a dollar each year. But they're independent commission. They have their own finances. They're, they're, they're pretty much independent of us. We have a board member that sits on it. That's our, on his end. So I do know that they are looking to, they add, on the rec center side, they add pickleball to Fairview Park. They run that park. And I think they actually, there, there was a suggestion by somebody else actually to do some pickleball at, at this location here. I don't know. That was an email that I heard about a week ago to the director there at Park. So I don't know. They, it had been suggested. I don't know what they're going to do, to be honest with you.